You're on. Good evening, welcome to the June 21st, 2021 Board of directors here in downtown Hanover, do you believe it? We're here tonight, do good work and have some fun. This is our first live reading in 13 months, 14 months, something like that. And we're welcome to be back. Those of us sitting around the table are not required to wear masks because we know that we are all vaccinated. Those who come into city hall are understanding is they need to wear masks because you're not allowed to ask them if they are vaccinated. So we will proceed to that as our one tonight. First order of business is always is public comment. Is there any public comment?
Yeah, we have, we have David Vincent who would like to speak. David, you should be unmuted.
Excuse me? Hello?
Hold on David, I'm turning my volume up, wait, one second. Alright, try again David?
Yes, can you hear me?
Well, I don't know why we can't hear you. I can hear you on my laptop, but it's very faint.
Well, I'm speaking.
Yeah, I know I can hear you David.
Can you hear me now?
Hold on, I'm trying to check. David, try now.
Can you hear me now?
Hold on David. Some reason this is Yeah, it's the new laptop David that we got just for this purpose, we tried it out this afternoon. Um, but now you're very faint. Are you on a cellphone David?
No, I am not. No.
Okay. That's weird, I don't understand.
Call back, maybe a different number, different line.
Well, he's not on his laptop, Peter said he should not have you having this problem. Hold on one second. Yeah, David, I don't know what the problem is, but I can, you're not broadcasting through the microphone. So I can barely hear you when I put my face right up. So Jessica's telling me she can hear me on you, on her end, I just can't hear you. Hold on David. Yeah, David, I apologize, I can't, you want to say, try speaking one more time?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Hello, hello, hello?
Yeah, I can, I can barely hear you. Betsy, do you have an idea for?
Yeah, I was gonna say maybe you can just phone into the
It's right here, Betsy, it's right here.
So why don't you just have him phone in here?
Well, it's gonna take five minutes to set it up. Yeah, so David, I'm afraid I'm gonna have to put you off to the next meeting while we figure out what's going on. You should be broadcasting through this laptop, but you're not. Sorry.
Okay. Is anyone else trying to speak in the bubble?
No, no other answers raised.
So the second item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider and approve FY 21-22 recent fee schedules. I hear about open that public hearing. Do you want to pick us? There doesn't look like there's too much on this issue.
I'm gonna let Betsy take it.
Betsy?
We did just send out, Peter distributed out about a fee that we inadvertently left off when you're putting this list together. One page of this came out, the feedback got caught when we took a look at the plaque last morning.
Did you introduce yourself Betsy?
I'm Betsy McLean, the administrative services director of Hanover Park. And this is kind of the, I'm also the scribe for those recent fees. So that is what is before you tonight. And a lot of these come out of our budget work that we do in February, March. So the departments are working through what revenue streams that they need to need to tweak in terms of their possible level, whether or not their users need to go up. So what you should have gotten in your Friday packet is a memo that outlines, that highlights the changes. And then each of the pages of the schedule itself has them highlighted. So I, normally I think we go page by page.
Sure, let's do that.
Right after that, to reflect the organizational change of consolidating the permitting activity under the planning zoning code office, the fire safety permit fees were moved out of the fire department and placed in a separate building, building safety permit section under planning zoning. So that's, that's sort of designed wise, one of the big, one of the changes. And then, then also we noticed that we weren't keeping pace with our overhead costs when we bill out on the special detail for the fire and ambulance. So that's why the cost plus 50%. Again, as their, maybe I'm sure retirement system fringes go up and cost is not actual full cost, that is typically the salary cost. So it's salary cost plus 50% to cover the administrative and cost and the fringe benefit cost.
Okay, just clarify. Fifty, 50% really kind of leaps that off the page I use. So what's included in that?
What's included in that is 30% for retirement system, 31 or 32% for retirement system. There's also workers' compensation, which for public safety folks is generally pretty high. So that's like a seven or eight percent. And then the rest is to do for a building cost.
So it's a retirement plan, it's really
That's the use, right?
Okay, thank you.
So within that, so the cost in an hourly rate does not include those
That's right, it's just the salary cost.
So salary is not including fringe, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Also, as part of the budget process, we calculated the necessary community contribution from our partners in Hanover Ambulance Services. And so the per capita fee is rising to a little over $40. And that increase has been communicated with both line and the door. Page one, change here, no proposed changes. Page three, again, no proposed changes. Page four, no changes. Page five, parks and recreation wanted to focus on not their recreational fees, but wanted to focus on their grounds fees and burial fees. So you'll see that the Hanover resident lot fee has gone from $650 to $700 to reflect the scarcity of the lots. And also it just The non-resident fee, again, there's such a big delta between residents and non-residents, there was no no compulsion to raise the non-resident fee. Then the burial fees, the cremation and urn tournament was raised from $250 to $300. And then long overdue frankly, I think, the department proposed a winter internment premium, because again, it's a lot harder to break ground in the desert than it is in the other ones. So there's a $100 premium for winter burial, for a whole burial and a $50 premium for a winter burial for cremation, make it remains. Then we eliminated the gravestone, gravestone foundation, that work is no longer done by us, the folks want monuments erected, that's contracted with a private Then under recycling and solid waste, little yes, moment of silence for we don't, we're no longer selling recycling bins.
Collectives items, yeah.
So those have gone away. On page six, very minor, it's not highlighted because we first, we had a separate and as the libraries became more creative in what collections meant, such as microscopes or that kind of stuff, they, they had a separate line item for over two for overdue materials, we collapsed that, so it's the same fee, so that's the only, the only change for the libraries this year. Um, planning, the planning mortgage fees, they, on page seven, Rob and his folks wanted to adjust the nailing fee because it wasn't covering the cost of certified nails. That's probably all I can say for that. And so that's how they proposed changing that fee. And then also Rob asked for a site name review for minor privacy instituted at $300, that's a new fee this year. In nine, no proposed changes. Page 10, for under zoning ability permits, no proposed changes. Under zoning permits, again, there was a cost to adjust the true cost of mailing notifications to a virus. That's the one, the $5 plus goes to $10 plus. And on page 12, these are fees that were actually adopted, well, let me back up. We adopted this, this fee structure for the planning fees last year, but just an oversight, a joint oversight, it wasn't, it didn't flow through to the zoning fees. I think in Rob's mind, that was just supposed to happen, but unfortunately I don't speak planning and zoning. So those were not updated and they should have been, so we'll catch you up with it this year. And so that's page 12. Page 13, again, is the aforementioned building safety fees that are moving out of the fire department to reflect that Rob's team has taken ownership of a lot of the fire and gas safety issues in terms of permitting.
So it's just moving the fees to this page and out of the fire department?
Yep, no reason.
Police department, they've asked us to simplify the fee structure for fingerprinting fees. So instead of there being a tiered system where there are multiple cards, again, because it's electronic, there's really very little incremental cost. Because all you do is capture the image once and printing it is not, is not that big of a deal. And so they've changed from $25 plus an incremental cost for additional cards, $25 for handover residents and employees of handover businesses. And then for non-residents, it's $50. And again, the fee doesn't change, but the incremental cost for additional copies goes away.
Betsy? On the police rate, $70. Is there no for it?
That is, that is comprised within, within that, that dollar amount. And a couple of years ago, the chief was successful along with our HR department in negotiating a fixed ceiling for special detail rates. It used to fluctuate with the overtime rate for the highest second grade of a certain position. Now there's a fixed dollar amount and truthfully, I can't remember if it's $45, but it's, but basically that's why that fee has remained static through the course of the labor contracts anyway.
And how was the retirement plan?
That's fair, that's, that's factored in that as well.
So what I'm trying to follow is why is fire so much higher than police?
Well, it's not really the cost because again, you took their overtime rate. That's, it was, it was intended to be instead, so they just don't have a fixed rate, it's every firefighter's overtime rate.
So you're just putting wages then?
That's right, the $70 rate for police is actually using $50, up 50% as well.
Okay.
So that's fingerprints. The alarm connection fee, which is a one-time charge so that dispatch can monitor your alarms, has gone up from $90 to $100, as well as the annual alarm monitoring fee, $375 to $385 for those properties that are being monitored within the town limits, $475 or $85 for out of town. And again, to this credit, Doug Hackett does a really good job with, because of course he'll bill a whole host of communities. And so he's very tapped into what, what this fees needs to do in order to cover this cost. Um, so moving on to dog license fees, those are, we, we, those have not changed. So that's
That's my staff.
I have a lot of latitude with those. So then the parking division, I confirmed with Sergeant Ballard today that, that this is not the year to really do anything with parking fees. So there was some minor corrections that we made some time ago to reflect the new way of handling permitting at the garage to take advantage of some of the fluff in the academic terms. So, so we had tweaked, tweaked the execution of the garage permits to reflect a different kind of usage rather than employees. More, more people storing their cars in the return. And so that had already been done and so there were no changes in the parking division this year. I would imagine as we look at that operation, we'll, we'll probably want to take it to that deeper. The press and desk fees, on page 20, again, John and his folks had done a pretty thorough job in previous years in correcting their fees. And they are very cognizant of building out a closely every year to determine when and if they need to go up in this particular year. So on page 23, driving rights and utility fees, these fall right out of our budget, our budget work over the early winter. And so what you see is, I guess folks might be most interested in knowing a carry-up hearing a while ago, so hey, you really should see, you know, what's the impact on an average user? And so with the proposed increases of water and sewer rates, the average quarterly bill of it goes from two, of a household, not a business, goes from $274 to $283. And I don't, basically in a nutshell, what's proposed are around 3% increases in the water fees and 2% increases in the sewer fees. And every year around this time, I think we are reminded that we did a base study several years ago, working with some of our large in consultation with some of our large customers and have a good model to build from, but it's never, it so far hasn't been the right time to come and really did that implement. It could go as far as really biting off the hydrant fees. And so I think that, that everybody sort of is waiting to either dip a toe into the pool or jump in, but for now, we're still on the side. So and then just to come where it's not on the web, in the proposed schedule, they got it Friday, but on your revised page number 25, there is a new fee that's being revised page 24, sorry, there is a fee for auxiliary meter that's being proposed. Here, it is folks that explored different software that can be installed and will allow consumers to really dig deep into their water consumption. Those of us that have solar panels are sort of transfixed by what we can see about the solar, solar usage. And then I know other, we don't have the technology to have, and also dig really deep into that. So, so that will be unfolding to our residents sometime over the next year. But that does think it come with a cost of $10 per quarter to pay for the additional hardware that's going to
That was the supplemental sheet you just handed up tonight. Again, Peter pulled back and caught that.
Well, it was my, it was my print, my, I didn't include, my print range didn't include the new row, so it's all a call me. And let's see, for sewer, sewer fees again.
Page 25.
Yep, page 25. Pretty much 2% across the board for, for the different types of fees. We do, just to, to say out loud every now and then, the city of Lebanon, we do provide wastewater treatment services to the city. We build, we send them one bill every quarter and we build them at a slightly higher rate than we do our residents to, to offset the cost of some meter monitoring that's done at the town line. And so that's why there's a separate, separate schedule than the lower half of page 25 to reflect those things. Also, just to sort of bring home that several years ago, we did some work to try to come up with a more reasoned water and sewer connection fee. And that has worked really, really well. And basically what, what a connection fee protects to do is to recognize the fact that previous users have invested in the system and new users sort of owe them a, some, some sort of investment to show that now the system has been built up to take their, to take their waste and to provide their water. And so we've got a good system for that, that's numbers based, that's always, always good. And that, that will change every year depending upon the asset value and asset value in each of the parts. That is the power of the 22 ways this was scheduled.
An unfair question, but we, we raised a significant amount of fees and is that percentage remain pretty much the same over the last couple of years or is it very?
Well, we'll ask you, unfortunately.
Let's just skip this last year.
Yeah. And because revenue was down, I mean, just to be clear to the viewing public, parking revenue was way down, parking activity was down.
We're doing better. Again, there's, there's, so I don't have a percentage that I
It should be fun to look at that again, I know we used to track that at one point just to see that we're, that the fee piece of our total revenues is keeping pace with the rest.
And it's an interesting, an interesting sort of academic question about really digging into what services should be fee-based. Because as you know, we've had the conversation about non-resident fees at the library, that, that's not free to library, so, so, but there's other, other solvable reasons for not charging a user fee per se in a couple of different engine prices. And so I agree, that's an interesting exercise that should be looked at.
One more thing, should, given the questions that we had about fire safety, crowd control, that rate, you know, cost plus 50% and the negotiated deal that the police have, shouldn't, should we be aspiring to some, a similar negotiation with the fire department? So we know what the hourly is instead of kind of cost plus 50%?
Certainly from a consumer standpoint, that would be helpful. And I can tell you that there's not as many
Right.
Details where our fire, fire and rescue trucks are called out, so that's very specialized. So, so I'm hedging your questions a little bit because I certainly think it could be a goal, but I'm not sure, we don't want to go at the highest which, which would put us over, over the moon in terms of fire. So that, and if we don't, dealing with our many groups, you know, they, they don't want to have losers and we have to pick, you know, the middle is necessarily where we would end up.
And you're right, John, we haven't spent as much time looking at the fire side because they do far fewer details than police do by and large. And so we, we just, because of the frequency of police details, both construction projects, traffic details, large events, so on. We've just got the police out probably times as often as firefighters are out, so.
Well, I assume if somebody needs a fire safety, crowd control detail.
Right.
You're gonna say, okay, the, the cost is between $40 and $50 an hour plus 50%. And so the consumer knows what they're getting?
Right.
I mean, that's how it's negotiated? So even though it's not on the fee schedule?
They know upfront what it's costing, okay. And sometimes they'll say, thanks, but no thanks. So we're, we're not forcing ourselves on them. We, we're upfront with them about what the cost will be so that they can decide if they're, if, if they want the coverage. Take a football game, a high school football game, for example. You know, traditionally the EMTs have been there, but as the team was struggling with budget cuts, they made a decision to sort of come up with a plan B. So we're, we're, we're not requiring that they have our, our coverage and then give them no choice in terms of billing.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Betsy.
Any, any public has comment on the fee schedule? Nobody has your hand up in the, in the public?
No, no.
So, board, any additional questions? I hear a motion to adopt the rate and fee schedule as proposed. For the discussion. See if you have all those in favor.
We don't have to say, we don't have to say, why do we get I? Oh wow, we should be done in no time. No more.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thanks, Betsy.
No schedule. Okay, so the next order of business is the recommendation to set the polling hours for town meeting July 13th, 2021.
There's no suggested time. I hope we do 7:00 AM to 19:00.
7:00 PM, right.
And, and the polls will be open in Dewey Field parking lot?
Correct, under the tent. That's correct, just as we did last year for town meeting.
So it's not drive-by, but it's plenty of parking right there.
Right.
Walked over.
Right, right.
Betsy, you want to come explain a little bit of that?
There is one very cool difference, right?
I'm not sure how cool it is.
It's gonna be hot.
Yeah, so the, the, those of us that, that were there under the dark tent, counting ballots in the dark because the machines failed. We, we, so there's been a ban on doing your, doing your ballot underneath a pine tree, that won't work. And we've also, we have yet to, to trial it, but there, there are, the college has these plexiglass trailers which have air conditioning, which we can put the voting machines in so that they're protected. So, so we're hoping to do that. We're not sure, you know, again, it will be transparent, but there might be some issue because people will not be able to feed their ballot in there. So, and we don't want people in that little booth.
They'll be able to watch their ballot being cast through.
So we're still trying to figure, figure that out. But the good news is the machines were, were, we had made it on the machines late, late last week and they gave us an extra machine just because we're one of the we'll be out there alone. And we do have lights under the tent this year, so that will help whatever come day.
So people for voting during the day, they'll, they can either vote after tea or they can come to Dewey Field between 7:00 and 7:00. And so our business meeting at 7:00.
7:00 PM. Right. And Dewey have no excuse absentee stuff?
Well, no, even, even, even there always is an excuse, meaning that under the emergent, the health emergency, the governor declared that concern or caution for, because of the pandemic was, was treated as a disability. Because of emergency order 83, the Patrick governor's declaration, that's been, that's expired. However, the, the, the provisions relating to voting extend through this town meeting cycle. So yes, we have in essence, no excuse absentee balloting. And we would, we're not pushing absentee ballots as much as we did last year, but truthfully, it would, it's gonna be hot. It would be, it's just easier to process a known quantity than it is to, to not. So I certainly, as we all interact with our neighbors, if, if folks want, you know, our, our mentor to casting absentee ballots, we will certainly encourage.
And how does one get an absentee ballot?
One can go to our website, we just put the link on the main landing page back on ago. There's lots of good information and one of, one of the links is the request for absentee ballot form that needs to be signed, that can be scanned back to us or dropped dropped off to us. Or people can bring it into the office and get their ballot and cast their ballot. Or people can bring it into the office and get their ballot and cast their ballot in the office and say postage and just do it one-stop shop that way.
So you can go to the website and follow the instructions there, or you can show up at town hall and get it that way.
That's right.
And, and the warrant has been posted and the town report has been posted?
That's right.
Correct. Are the town reports printed, or?
There we are, in the process, they're up.
So, when we, when you estimate, a printed copy will be available publicly?
I believe Karen thinks it's coming this Friday, it's coming Friday.
Okay, so next week?
Yeah, we're, we're required to have them available fourteen days prior to town meeting, but I believe we're to take delivery, it's coming Friday.
That's, just trying to get you to say things publicly, so it's in the record.
Right, right, right.
And it's just a clarification, which in the back of my head, wasn't there one particular warrant article that you have to leave open for voting after seven PM?
The bond vote.
Would you explain that, please?
Well, so the bond vote is by statute, made because it's in, um, the town meeting is voting on whether or not to get the town into the future, that, um, always has to be the first money article that the business meeting deals with. So, so the business meeting will get started at seven or as close
Seven PM.
To that as possible, as folks settle down and, you know, stop beating their horns and that kind of thing. And so, um, so there's one article, short article about appointments before that. Then, um, the, um, there will be a written ballot, and it's a two-thirds, two-thirds majority to pass, and so as folks check in for the business meeting, and those of us that attended last year, remember, there was two sort of drive-in lanes. You'll be checked in, get, get a paddle in, says you're a hand over voter. And, and you'll also get a packet that will include a paper ballot, because this is a written, the bond vote will be a written ballot. So, um, that will be, I won't say challenging, but the moderator, um, and us as running runners will need to maybe do a good job to make sure we've gotten everybody, so it's gonna be a little, because it's, it's pretty spread out. And so we're gonna have to make sure there's no, that it's not gonna be a systematic way to know, oh, we issued a hundred, we got a hundred ballots. So, um, so we're, we're gonna have to rely on word of mouth and just people like wagging it up and down. And you're right, though, once the moderator calls the question and the vote starts, those polls need to be open for an hour.
For that particular warrant.
So, but the only way for the voter to present that bond vote is by handing it to a employee, or is it or bring, or they could bring it over to the tent?
Well, I think what we're gonna try to do, we have orchestrated this with Jeremy, but the nature of the drive-in is to keep people sort of not, not milling about in big crowds. Um, so the thought was we would divide the parking lot into sectors. Each sector would have, you know, sort of a team captain, and then that person would be responsible for
Voting.
Correct.
Which is what we did last year, if you recall, we had a, a
No written ballot, though.
Yeah, but we had a paper, paper vote for the budget.
That was a hand vote.
Hand vote?
Yeah, we, we, I, I, I was
Oh, that's right, that's right.
We went back.
That's right, I forgot that, thank you, Betsy.
Yeah, so I, we got us, we got us.
That's right, I forgot, everyone, yeah.
So, so, but this year we are prepared.
So this is, this is article seven.
Right, so I, I just think it's important, that just, I've made you say all that, because I think it's confusing. So we have it in the record, you'll present it a couple of times, obviously you'll present it that night, how, how people show up, because you have to show up to vote on the bond vote.
That's correct.
Okay.
Unless your, your, you know, friend or neighbor spouse, whenever, calls you from, you know, their cell phone and says you've got fifty minutes to get down here.
Correct.
And that's why they leave it also for sure.
But they have to show up.
They still have to show up.
Betsy, anytime within that hour, a, a voter could put their hand out their car window and waggle it around, and the runner would have to to notice them.
And that, and that's gonna be distracting for the, for the, um, for the, for the meeting as in general. Yeah, and so I think, I think the reality is that, um, you know, the Jeremy, our moderator, will just need to sort of, you know, say, we're, we're gonna really try to push, there'll be an initial surge where most people will write, know what they're gonna vote, right? And then, and then maybe do another article or two, sort of pop, you know, and then sort of set the hounds loose in terms of going out to the, out to the cars and saying, okay, is there another round? And then clearly, as the hour comes to a close, there'll have to be a big, a big push to make sure we've got it.
My guess is that we're not gonna have, um, a whole lot of flurry of late breaking voting activity on the bridge bond. This is not like the three-party agreement, for example, right, with the, with the school deal, and people did, in fact, wait until the hour started and wandered down to vote, so we've had some of those big bond issues in the past, but I don't think this is gonna be that sort of vote. It's my guess.
Two-thirds of
Never can tell, never know.
And requires two-thirds of those who vote.
That's right.
We've all been, you know, held captive for sixteen months, and there might be a big rush to get down to Dewey Field. Bring it on.
It's an alme.
It is alme.
I know, I know, well, we, we did, we did, we ordered ballots, um, because again, a really nice improvement, um, uh, coming out of this fall cycle was that we can use one ballot above absentee and official ballots, so that's, that's a thing now, which is very nice. Um, so I ordered thirty-two hundred, and now I'm thinking, I don't know, that's, usually in any other year, that would be way too many, but, um, again, I don't know, so, yeah.
Okay, so have you set one out with the board's track?
Yes, we just didn't vote, no. I seconded, no, or Nancy did, one of, one of us.
So, Athos moved and Nancy seconded, setting the polling hours from seven AM to seven PM for July thirteenth town meeting. So now you need to vote.
Is there any other discussion here, and all those in favor?
Aye.
We have set the polling hour. Any more of update, without me?
Well, it, the term meeting update, no, it is that the board now needs to take a look at the or, the warrant, I'm sorry, and decide who is going to speak to which items on the warrant, beginning with article six. And again, this is just you all making the motion, um, then asking for a second, and then giving a, uh, reading the motion, and, uh, sometimes giving just a brief sort of a summary of what we're asking the voters to, to tackle with this particular warrant.
I don't, I didn't analyze this, so just throwing something, wouldn't it make sense if possible that we read like two in a row and you go to the next person instead of jumping all around, and I assume that Peter, you'd want to read the budget, the main budget. So, that's kind of cool, you get that one, and after that, I'm not sure anyone's, who would like to
Well, you know, Nancy likes to say all of those.
She likes the capital reserve in and out.
You just kind of
Take it out of those.
Crave it, don't move them often. All right, so Nancy against those.
Is that what you want to get? I didn't mean to speak. Okay.
So Nancy has eleven and twelve, just, and Peter has, um, uh, what's not here? Six, seventeen, I'm sorry, seventeen.
Nancy has eleven and twelve, and Peter has seventeen.
Sorry. There are twenty-one, that doesn't, it's twenty-one minus six, right, so fifteen, ten.
I dare you to do the bond one as well, is anyone else interested in the bond one?
No, why, you take that one, too.
Okay, let me do bond and the seventeen.
I'll do eight, nine, and ten.
Peter's doing seven. Joanna wants to do eight, nine, and ten.
Well, if we're doing three.
Yeah.
If that makes sense, or I don't know.
Yeah, may I stay standing and just do article thirteen then about the sidewalk?
So, um.
Sorry. Nancy, did you say you're gonna do thirteen?
I did.
And then Bill does fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and
The ending agreement, so?
Athos does the last three.
Athos gets to do community power.
Excellent, make sure they have a flashlight. I was an area in last year, and I was glad my phone had
I mean, I'm happy to do the last three, Athos, if you'd rather do the other three.
Eighteen and nineteen and twenty, and by the way, Athos, twenty, um,
Yeah, I'll just read it.
Yeah, you'll have, uh, Deb Nelson will be there to speak to the item, so all you have to do is read it.
Do you want me to do twenty-one as well?
Sure, that's the, just any other business to come before the meeting?
So, who's doing thirteen, no, who's doing the first two?
Yeah, we still have articles, art, article six is not, is not taken, it's Peter.
He does seven and seven.
Why not?
Might as well have a fun one.
I'll have your names for you, Peter.
The other two are not fun.
Okay, so the order is as follows, Peter's doing article six and article seven. Joanna's doing articles eight, nine, and ten. Nancy is doing eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Bill is doing fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Peter is doing seventeen, and Athos is doing eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one.
Love it.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you. That's it for your town meeting update.
Okay. COVID update.
So my, um, recommendation for the board tonight, at your last meeting, you suspended the mask ordinance, which was ordinance number thirty-nine. We still have ordinance number forty in place, and that was the emergency public health ordinance, um, which was tied fairly directly to the, the state's emergency order. The state still has a public health, um, oh, suddenly forgetting the name, um, it has a public health regulation in place, but it's not an emergency order.
Is that your, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is that your computer that it's doing from, because there's something that is blocking your face as you're talking?
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Oh, yeah, you can ignore that.
Yeah, thanks.
I know, but I wanted people to see.
Thank you, thank you, Nancy, I didn't even notice it, um, so the, um, the emergency public health condition is still in, in effect, but the emergency order is, has been, um, has been retracted by the state. Technically, ordinance number forty, which regulated the size of outdoor gatherings that we put in place last August, August thirty-first, um, technically, that's no, the ordinance is no longer in place, but quite frankly, we're recommending the board to take an affirmative action to suspend it. And I just wanted to share with you that, uh, I've been in touch with Dartmouth on this, because we, we connected our emergency public health ordinance in consultation with Dartmouth around their own thinking with their COVID team of the advisable group of outdoor and indoor gatherings on campus. Dartmouth is, is in the process of making a decision to lift those restrictions on gathering sizes either, um, very quickly or by July first. Um, very quickly, meaning as the students arrive back for summer term or a week from now, essentially. So I'm suggesting to the board that we just suspend ordinance number forty, not rescind it, because you, you never know what we may be dealing with in the future, depending upon vaccination rates and variants, but for now, recommend that we suspend the gathering limitations, and I should point out, um, during the last year, we had very little interest in, in people hosting gatherings at all of any size, with the exception of, of high school sports teams trying to do team meetings and things, very limited interest in hosting gatherings, but as, as we got through the worst of this pandemic, as the vaccination rates came up, as the numbers of cases in the state and hospitalization rates dropped this spring, there was suddenly much more interest in gatherings, and we said to everybody who submitted a request for an outdoor activities permit, we will take your requests on a case-by-case basis, we'd like to see what your COVID sort of plan is for your event. Um, but by and large, we approved almost all of those outdoor activity permits, not all, but almost all, with some, um, some restrictions placed on them in terms of numbers and requirement for masking and all those sorts of things. But at this point, um, given our numbers, we don't think it makes sense to continue with that ordinance, and I just got the latest COVID numbers for Grafton County this afternoon, were the best, were the highest vaccination rate county in the state. We're not quite at Vermont's level yet, but we're pretty darn close. Um, in Grafton County, sixty-two percent of all residents have been fully vaccinated, but of children twelve and up, so anybody who's eligible to get the vaccine, we're at sixty-nine percent. For anybody eighteen and over, we're at seventy percent, and if you're sixty-five or older, we're at eighty-eight percent in Grafton County. Dartmouth, as of today, is at seventy-seven percent. Um, and eighty percent of the incoming summer class is fully vaccinated, so we're in really, I think, very good shape on the vaccination front in Grafton County, and it doesn't surprise me that this county's doing so well, between being the home of a college and also a medical center. Uh, it, it sort of makes sense to me that you would see, uh, a really high percentage vaccinated in an area in a county like this, but we, we, we in fact are, so at that, um, I just wanted the board to know that with your concurrence, we'll just suspend ordinance number forty and keep it on the books, just in case.
What do you need from us to vote?
Just, just a motion to do that would be great, Peter.
Okay, I move that we suspend ordinance forty.
Second.
Move the discussion. Very enough, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is suspended. Question, do we have off-campus housing update?
Um, it's been lively, um, here in the last, uh, week or so, since the college announced that it had an over-subscription of on-campus housing, uh, for the fall term. I've, I've shared, um, with folks who've reached out to me that I think there are a couple of reasons why the, no, the demand for on-campus housing is so high this fall. Um, first of all, fall term, Joanna, correct me if I'm wrong, but fall term is the, is the term when they have the they have the most number of students who live off camp, have to live off campus because of a traditional shortage of housing on campus. They don't have a room on campus for every single student at Dartmouth, undergraduate. Um, or graduate student for that matter, so fall term is always a crowded term anyway, in terms of a pressure on off-campus housing in the upper bound. Um, it's particularly severe this fall for a couple of additional reasons. One, because students have been essentially away from each other in some cases for the last fifteen months. They're all really eager to be back on campus, um, to be with their friends and to be, um, resident on the campus. So that leads to a lot of people signing up to be in the lottery. Second, and I think this in some ways may be even more significant, mo, many of those programs, academic programs that would have enabled them to be off-campus for the semester, particularly overseas, aren't happening. Or are significantly scaled back, so whereas, you know, in a fall term, you might see several hundred students planning, um, foreign study abroad programs as part of their four years at Dartmouth. Many of those programs, the lion's share of those programs, aren't happening, and so this forces more students to want to be or to need to be in town. The, the reason we're worried about it is twofold, one, we have a shortage of workforce housing already. And we have a tendency in this community for there to be overcrowding in off-campus rentals that is very difficult for us to manage. With the new rental housing ordinance that we plan to bring to you a little later this summer, my hope is, for your first meeting in August, um, we're, we're recommending some fairly significant modifications to our inspection and certification program to enable us to get a better handle on overcrowding in off-campus rentals. You know, however, there is a zoning amendment, petition warrant article on the warrant, that would change the definition of family to allow up to two individuals per bedder. So if you think we have an overcrowding in off-campus rental problem now, just wait to see what happens if that petition warrant passes.
So, just, just, can I just put a little plug in here?
Yeah.
That petition zoning article went That petition zoning article went for the planning board, and the planning board recommends in the warrant
Right.
that we do not approve
Correct.
the petition, right?
Correct.
That's, that's what the planning board has emphatically noted.
Right.
So.
And, you know, and one of the pressures we face in this community, and this is true in many college communities, is that part of the reason students double or triple up in off-campus rentals beyond the numbers they're allowed, which is no more than three unrelated, unless a particular, particular unit is certified for more, and some are. It's because rents are so high. And so students are trying to figure out how to make gatherings meet and cutting, cutting expenses. One way you do that is to, to double or triple up where you shouldn't, because the landlords are making money hand over fist on these rental units. I think it's also important to point out that a lot of these rental units are really heavily damaged by students' women. So that students take their toll on these rental units. And landlords will tell you, I need to make enough money on these rental units to pay for the annual repair costs. I have to incur to get these units ready for the next set of tenants. You know, I, I don't know where the, where the truth is in all this. I just am sharing with you the, the conundrum that we face as staff. So we want to get this rental housing ordinance set of recommendations to the board because we're anticipating that we're going to be dealing with some real pressures on off-campus.
Assuming article six, whatever, it's just not passed. Are we still thinking three, no more than three unrelated?
Correct.
Even in the new ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. So last year, we were in the same position. I, I know that we have not always enforced that vigorously in the past. And last year, we were sitting here at about the same time saying, we should be enforcing that rigorously.
Right.
And we opted not to, because there had been leases signed, students expecting housing. We didn't want to disrupt the apple pie. But I don't want to be in that same position for this September.
Right.
So we need to get the word out that we, if, if it is our intention to enforce the three unrelated, then we need to get the word out to landlords and to the students.
Right.
That they shouldn't be signing leases for more than three.
And so Peter, we need to wait till we get through town meeting and legitimate votes on the warrant that could or could not impact this issue, right? But we, we are preparing a set of announcements to get out to all of the property owners who rent units to make sure they're aware of two things. One, the status of the definition of, of family and the, the zoning as it pertains to no more than in a unit. And also to provide them with an awareness that we are proposing a significantly enhanced rental housing unit that will do two things, among others. One, will, will ensure that we're getting into those units every year to do an inspection and certify the occupancy. And two, to, to more strictly enforce the life safety code violations that we're seeing in some of these rental units. And sadly, some of those life safety code violations don't come as a result of a landlord not ensuring their building is compliant, but come as a result of damage done to the systems by the tenants during occupants. So I just, I'm thinking that this coming academic year, and my guess is the fall term will be the most problematic of all of our terms, because fall tends to be a heavily subscribed term at Dartmouth. So I'm assuming that the trend will continue this year. We've, we're just going to have to get through what I think is going to be a challenging year on the off-campus housing front. And, and to me, it's linked to a more significant issue, which is a, a conversation with the college about what are their plans for expanding the housing available on campus? Because not only are we running into these issues with oversubscription, but as we know, if we participated in the rental housing or the housing breakfast that the, that the community suggested two weeks ago, we've got such a severe shortage of workforce housing units in the upper valley that we need everybody working on this issue. And the college is one of many partners that's going to have to figure this out.
Can't we also rely on what I, with affection called coconut wireless? In other words, people literally gossiping, literally sharing news, whether it's, you know, Twitter or Facebook or, you know, TikTok, however they communicate
Right.
about the impending fines, about the, you know, the occupancy rates and so forth. In other words, not to just rely on formal pieces of paper, formally being handed to landlords, the landlords formally handing them to the, you know, the person who signs the lease. But as I say, getting it out in the rumor mill of what's expected, because those rumors fly faster than our sheets of paper that we distribute.
You know, Nancy, one of the challenges we face is we really need the college to help us by communicating effectively with their students who are living off campus as a, as a unique group over and apart from students who are living on campus.
Right.
Colleges had a tendency to be relatively hands-off when it comes to student, student-like off-campus. In, including, they won't provide us with a, with a contact list for those students, and I understand that. But consequently, we, we don't know who those students are who are living off-campus. We rely on the landlords to communicate with the students or the college to communicate with the students. We don't know who they are.
And they don't have like an assistant key. They don't have a member of the administration who is specifically responsible for
No.
us, even though they're, they're students.
Right.
The physical, the physical sense of where they're living. All of a sudden, the divorce is the college responsibility.
Right. The college did some work, you know, during the COVID pandemic and the notification process. They, they seem to do a pretty good job of making sure that the off-campus students knew as much as the on-campus students did. So I, you know, I think they knew who was enrolled and physically in the region, but we don't have access to those that contact information. And so we're often hamstrung because we can't, we can't control the communication route. Or, and we can't ensure that we've done our very best to get the message to the students who are living off-campus, except to rely on the landlords, some of whom are better than others at communicating with their tenants. So it's frustrating. I, I think the, the issue of trying to manage off-campus student residency issues in general is probably the most frustrating thing we deal with in the planning and zoning department, because we're, we're kind of operating with one hand tied behind our back.
But did, did the planning and zoning office during the pandemic and kind of the, the limits on parties and size of parties, did, were any enforcement actions issued by Rob and his team?
Several letters of warning were.
So, but no fines?
And so.
No fines. So despite the
The word got out.
the concern that was expressed, we didn't find anyone.
Right, right. Right, we did not find anyone.
And that was Michael Hensley.
Right.
Assuming the response, assuming the role that education was, would, might be more effective.
And unlimited amounts of education were dispensed by Michael. And to a certain extent, Rob and Ryan, but primarily Michael. A lot of face-to-face conversations, knocks, knock and talks at, at premises, talking with sports team coaches, talking with, with landlords. Developed a good working relationship with a couple of the landlords who have a large number of rental units, and we really needed them to help communicate some of the issues with their tenants. But on, on an ongoing basis, it's hard. You know, I, I often wish that, that as part of the off-campus rental registration process, we at least have contact information for the tenants, but we, we can't get that. And
I thought that was part of the rent, rental ordinance that we're supposed to be adopting.
That was part of the emergency ordinance, Joanna. But the rental housing ordinance, Laura, Laura is, Laura Spector Morgan is not sure from a stat, state law perspective that we can require that information.
Okay, so just, I mean, I'll just express my disappointment. I mean, the college obviously has an issue with having updates from students. Town in the, in the upper valley has an issue relative to workforce housing, and particularly for the, having, maintaining safe housing for students, which is now going to be exacerbated just in time when we are hoping to enforce a no, no more than three unrelated. So I mean, it's just a perfect storm. And it seems that we now have a bigger problem than we even had before. Okay. Any other questions? Any other updates?
No.
There's a, there's a person in the audience.
Oh, please, sorry.
I don't know if there's a motion, so I don't know what's appropriate, but I would like to speak on this item.
Sure.
Hi, Chris Kubik, OneHoliday Direct. I have a number of questions that are related to this. A couple of comments. First, I recall when the board passed the rental regulation for the emergency declaration. And I suggested that we get the names that the board require, the names of tenants. And it was suggested that we waited until it was a problem. I, I think it's really always too late when that's the case. But I do have a couple of questions about the statements that were made. And then I have some questions about Dartmouth's plan and what the town, when the town knew and how the town has been involved with that. So. So when, and I think it was you, Peter, if I wrote it down correctly, said that we've not always enforced the zoning ordinance requiring limits to occupancy. And specifically, you noted that last year, we took that to enforce that. And I guess I'm wondering when that happened, why that happened, how the public was notified? Because I guess to me, if I'm speeding down Maple Street or Lime Road, the, the police department doesn't need to notify me that they're going to go ahead and enforce this speed limit. So I'm very confused about that statement.
I think I was just expressing the reality. And that was the reality, that was, that's the reality we've been, we've been living under for several years.
Well, and Chris, I, I think if you recall, when we were talking about, about the emergency public health ordinance last year, last August, one of the things we talked about was limiting the number of tenants per room to one per room. And the students were outraged with us that we would try and regulate bedroom occupancy. If you recall, that was, and quite frankly, that was the beginning of the petition warrant article we now have on the warrant that would allow more than one person per bedroom. You remember the Dartmouth student referred to it as the brothel ordinance, our zoning amendment, our zoning component that limits, limits housing to no more than three? You remember that conversation that we had in that public hearing a year ago, August? So one of the issues that was clear from the town attorney's perspective is she was, she did not feel we had the legal right under state law to limit occupancy per bedroom, even in a pandemic situation. That was the conversation that we had ten months ago. With respect to enforcement of the no more than three unrelated, our biggest challenge is not knowing when there are more than three unrelated in a unit, because we don't get into these units to inspect them annually. Landlords aren't always honest with us. Students aren't always honest with us. And we don't have eyes in every bedroom. So it is a difficult component to enforce as a community. We're hoping that the proposed changes to the rental housing ordinance will enable us to have more teeth in the no more than three unrelated by certifying the actual occupancy of each unit we inspect and post, just as the city of Burlington does with its off-campus rental housing ordinance. But we'll see how the public hearing goes.
So to be clear, my understanding is we do not have a rental housing ordinance. We're in the process of drafting.
No, we do, Joanna. Remember, we adopted
It was kind of
a regi, a rented housing registration ordinance, right? So we required that each rental unit register with us so that we could, at the, and they had to pay a registration fee?
Yep.
And at that point, we could formally confirm, confirm with each registered rental housing unit owner what their occupancy was. What we don't have in place yet is the rental housing inspection program that would enable us to get into those units every year, and not just on a complaint basis. Right now, the rental housing registration ordinance allows us to gain access on a complaint basis.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So that's the difference.
And may I follow up, just as you mentioned, the complaint basis. If somebody files a complaint, I assume the town adds on that complaint every time?
We talked, Chris, and I know where you're going with this. He's filed suit against the town, so I, I gotta be careful now. This is not a court of law.
No, but I'm looking for information.
But yes, we do, we do follow up on every complaint that we receive.
Every time.
Every time, depending upon the nature of the complaint and whether or not the complaint from our legal perspective is something that we either legitimately have authority over under either local ordinance or state law.
Can you tell me when the town first received communication from the college regarding the five thousand dollar incentive?
I saw it on the Valley News.
That's fair. So the town was not asked for any feedback in that or?
Nope. Nope.
Has the college or the town anticipated how many students, additional students will take? I mean, I know they have, you know, the million dollars.
A million, a million. Yeah, yeah.
Is that two hundred students, two hundred additional students that the college is setting deal with?
So by Monday, students have until Monday to sign on to the payment and withdraw from the lottery, on-campus lottery. And it's, I think the maximum number they're talking about is two hundred. It's part of the college's strategy, as I understand it. One element of the strategy to reduce the, both reduce the demand for on-campus housing, but also to find more on-campus housing through putting in triples where they've got doubles, using break rooms or lounges in dormitories. And I think they're hoping to get another seventy or eighty rooms that way.
So I guess I have two more questions, and I apologize for taking a little bit of time. I don't come often. I have a particular interest in this. I can talk about it later. If the college could mandate that off-campus students that resided here during COVID adhere to the college's COVID, COVID responsibility, I would assume that that means they have authority over those students for things that are legally forcible. Do you believe, Peter or Julia, that the, that the college has assumed responsibility for off-campus housing during the pandemic when the new students were local?
So all I know, Chris, is that as students signed the community expectations agreement, and because they were in the region and not at home with their families, the college essentially established a, a ring or a region inside which students were required to live. I have no idea how the college pleased that, none whatsoever. We weren't involved in any of that activity at all. We're focused solely on, on students who are living in this community. So even though students weren't supposed to live outside of that perimeter, have no way of knowing whether students abided by that or not, or how the college enforced that.
And I guess, thank you. My last question would be, does the town have any plan specifically, starting when the students come back? Starting when the students come back to fall, regardless of whether. Uh. Petition passes for the zoning or for rental housing ordinance took place differently, or will it be another year of, and I don't need to. Vote anybody from the board of the state of earlier, we just won't enforce it.
So to, we have a plan, depending on the vote at town meeting, Chris, as I just shared with the board. If the petition warrant article passes that changes the definition of family to allow up to two people per room. We have to communicate that to all rental unit owners. Um, and if that does not pass. Um, then what we plan to communicate right after town meeting to all registered rental unit owners, and I, I emphasize the word registered. Because we have people out there who rent and don't register, and we don't know about them until we get a complaint and can investigate, so that happens. Um, to communicate with them that our intention is to take a rental housing enforcement inspection ordinance to the board, their first meeting in August. Um, put them on notice in case they have an interest in the issue, and that the, the goal of that ordinance is to allow for enhanced inspection and enforcement. Of the, um, both the occupancy limits and also the life safety code address.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'll, I'll just make one comment. And done, and I thank you for your time and your work on this. I know it's not an easy issue, it's not really a thing over. But in our communities that do much better. I would recommend a look at Boulder, Colorado. The reality is it's all money.
Yeah.
If I know nobody's going to inspect my property, and I can show seven or eight or nine or 10 or 11 people in a unit. And I don't care about anybody else, I'll do it. I own the rental property at 42 Brecken Road. I registered with the town. I had many offers. That exceeded the occupancy limit, and I said, no. It's not equitable. Hear me. And for you to tell any owner, I will inspect once a year. Regardless of how many complaints and the complaints I've made. I will say it publicly against Fred Salvatorello, and his ownership of properties. Is disturbing what the town has lacked to do. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next for business is the administrative corrections to the texture 21 first bill.
Yep, memo speaks for itself. As part of the, uh, first bill, there are one, two, three, four, five properties. Um, I'm sorry, four properties where the assessor is recommending an administrative correction.
And what kind of motion do you need on?
Just a, a motion to approve these corrections, Peter.
I will approve these corrections to the. Turk tax year 2021 first bill.
Your second, yeah?
I'll second.
Any questions? You're in all those in favor, say aye. Okay. Jennifer Cashman is stepping up to do lots of good things.
Jennifer Cashman has joined us today. It was her first day. She's drinking from the fire hose. That's our new. Deputy tax collector and associate town clerk and asking that the board authorize this appointment this evening.
I move the appointment of Jennifer Cashman as.
Deputy tax collector.
Tax collector and associate town clerk. Still second.
Discussion. You're in all those in favor, aye. Also, Jennifer's got some more work to do.
Right, this is for the New Hampshire Department of Safety appointment to appoint her as deputy tax collector and assistant town clerk. Um, and as town opponent of municipal agents. These are all statutory requirements. She's a municipal agent, so municipal agent means she can process motor vehicle registrations at us.
What's the difference between?
One is the town appointment, the other is the appointment for purposes of role of representing the state. I know, it's, it's silly, but it's what the state requires.
Okay, so you need a motion to.
Bill's trying to do that.
So, cool, done.
Second.
We're discussing on number, item number nine. And you know, in all those in favor, aye.
Aye. Peter, I'm sorry, but I just realized I see Jim Lustenator has got his hand up. Um, I'm gonna allow Jim to talk. I'm just not sure this speaker's gonna work again, so. Jim, are you there?
Hello?
Jim?
Yep.
Jim, I apologize. As with David, for whatever reason, we're not able to hear you broadcasting through this laptop. Um, if you want to type your question into the chat, Jim, or your comment, then I can read it for you. But unfortunately, the volume is not working. On this laptop in spite of me having modified all the settings, so you should be coming through loud and clear, but you're not.
Julia, can you hear me now?
Pardon me?
Can you hear me now?
No, I, I, I mean, I can barely hear you, but not enough for the board to be able to hear, so I'm. Wondering if you want to put it into chat, and then as soon as you're done, I'll read it.
I'll do that right now.
Thank you.
Where is it? Oh.
Yeah, Jim has a comment I read, so he's gonna be typing in something here. Peter, I'm sorry. It's a little late. I apologize, Jim. I just noticed that you, this is my first time trying to manage Zoom plus answer all your questions, so. Um.
So let's move on. We'll come back to Jim after we've done the minutes. You know, I have additions, corrections, deletions for June 7, 21 minutes.
I mean, that's.
All right, let's, let's do, this was, it's our business first. Any corrections, additions for the minutes?
I want to speak on the minutes.
You want to speak on the minutes?
Yes. Minutes, right, please. We, it's saying fully written, don't, I'll ask what happened. Who's running this? They used to be actually.
Uh, I think we'll, we'll do with the minutes. Do we have any?
Do you read the minutes?
No, I'm not gonna read the minutes. The minister handed out this meeting.
So they can see how poor they are.
The minister available on the town will expect anybody who wants to see that.
I know how bad they are.
Thank you. Uh, any additions, corrections, deletions, cedements? You're in all those in favor, aye. Ready to work on them?
Oh, aye.
Okay. Administrative report.
Um, let me just read Jim's question. Um. Peter, if the college can have a lottery, why can't the town have a lottery among people who want to rent? The town could set a limit to the number of properties that could be rented to students and ask those interested to enter the lottery for license to rent. Um.
My guess, Jim, is that that's not legal. Um, because that is essentially. Uh, interfere, interfering in the rental of private property. I think the best we can do. Is to do an inspection of each property post where it is physically visible on the exterior of the property, the occupancy limit. Of the unit require that the, um. The occupancy limit signage be publicly visible. So that anybody who is concerned about overcrowding of rental units can avail themselves of that information. And provide the town with, with, um, a complaint if they would, if they believe that more than the certified. Number of individuals are residing in that unit. I don't, I, I'm thinking Jim off the top of my head here, but I don't know that there's a way that the town could legally conduct a lottery. For property we don't own.
So why don't we just ask that question to our attorney and you get back to it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask Laura.
I also think, because the gen item was there just to get an update on what the college's plans were.
Right, right.
We obviously, we have a major, uh. Major activity to put in place a rental ordinance agreement, and I think that's, we all have seen the importance of that. We all will deal with that beginning in August. And, uh, I think suggestions like these are excellent, but will be a part of that discussion.
Right, about the, the overall renting housing inspection.
So I think, I think we don't need to, this is not the time to be talking about. Rental ordinance agreement, which that will come up in our next meeting or the August meeting. Okay, Julie, any administrative report?
Uh.
Give me fast ones, yes, we did.
Yeah.
Julie, any other administrative report?
No, Peter, at this point, we're, we're just geared up to finish our preparations for town meeting, um, and otherwise. Business as usual.
Okay, uh, select or reports, Bill?
Nothing to report.
Nothing here.
Nothing.
David, you, we missed you at all the comments. We'll give you an opportunity now to, for the public comment.
Okay. Other business.
What's, what, what we're on now is other business, David. We're, we're on other business now, so that's why Peter's calling on you, yeah.
Okay. Saturday was, uh, Juneteenth. Which celebrates the fact that. After two years of being held in violation of civil rights, slaves in Texas were finally freed. After, after the Civil War, federal legislation that protects free slaves. That's federal legislation, 18 U.S.C. 241 and 242. Deprivation of rights under color of law. So that law enforcement couldn't illegally abuse. African-Americans were traveling. It became a federal crime, up to 10 years potential penalty when injuries occurred during the time people were deprived of their civil rights. New Hampshire passed similar legislation, 633-2 and 633-3, restraint of freedom, restraint of freedom. Violation of our civil rights not to be treated. Kind of perilous in federal law. Hanover held African-Americans, disabled veterans, me, my wife, children in violation of our constitutional rights and freedom for over two years. During the illegal restraint, which you all authorized, I fractured my spine accessing my property. It has now been over four years with no one from the Hanover Police Department or Fire Department. Coming to my home to view evidence that a crime has been committed at my property. During the time I was restrained, I came to help to this board repeatedly. I had to delay hip replacement surgery at the VA. I was never told about the fact that there's a Hanover community nurse whose job it is to help individuals get their medical treatments. I filed complaints, elder abuse, and restraint of freedom with the Hanover Police Department. They still refuse, refuse to visit my property to view evidence. The crimes have been committed by this board. I'm wondering when, if ever, this town is going to apologize for holding me, my family, and other people hostage in violation of civil. Of, of state and federal law.
David, you've heard these complaints many times.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention.
In addition, do you notice that you're still flying, you're still flying the weather, excuse me. You're still flying the weather vane at your meeting, which was taken down a year ago from Dartmouth because it was a racist stereotype. But yet you still have it flying here. You still have it on your vehicle. You still have it on your all-white police force, your all-white highway department, your all-white fire department. They all still have this symbol. You have it on all your vehicles. You have it on all your bills. It's outrageous that this town. Can violate the civil rights of human beings. White, black, brown, and do nothing about it, and not even answer questions when you're the. Constitution of the state, as well as the mission of this town, is that you will be responsive to the public. You are not responsive to the public. You're a violation of the state constitution, and you're a violation of town government rules. You're a fraud and a criminal, all of them.
I was gonna give you a drought update. Bill had asked if I could give a drought update.
Oh.
Right, well, we're, we're, there's a very small part of, of this, of the western side of the state that includes Hanover and Lebanon, and it's in a moderate drought situation. Um, and that continues. Um, we're, the northern part of the state has also now moved into a moderate drought situation, Coth County. So between Coth County and this little sliver of the midwestern side of the state, we're in a moderate drought situation. However, unlike Lebanon, which takes its water from Maskoma Lake. Um, and the state regulates the flow of water from Maskoma Lake, and the state made some decisions to. Um, limit the city's offtake of water from the lake in response to the drought. We are not facing a similar situation in Hanover at this point. Our reservoirs are, are relatively full. They're in good shape. Um, we, we weren't faced with a situation this time last year because demand for water was way down because the college, which was essentially. Closed, right, last summer. Um, we'll see between forecasted rainfall and water usage patterns as the college comes back into a much higher activity level. We'll see if it makes sense for us to declare an outdoor irrigation limit, which is what the city of Lebanon has done, but so far, we're not at that point yet. So that's why Lebanon declared some limitations early on about a month ago, and we're not there at this point because our, our source of water is different.
Thank you.
I, I really feel like I need to address the David Tinselitz situation a little bit. Tonight was, uh. Overboard. Um, David has made several, has, uh. Brought his concerns about town activity to this board and through many legal suits over the last five-plus years. David has lost all of those lawsuits. He continues to bring the same questions, the same issues, week after week. We've also learned that to try to answer him in a public session, any session, just brings, one, one answer brings four more accusations. And, uh, that, that is why we, we do not engage in, in these meetings. We have addressed all of his issues. Uh, we have listened and, um. I'm just gonna stop there. Or.
My recommendation would be, since we keep going over and over the same thing, is to ask our attorney for some advice on. My suggestion would be to summarize what, what our legal position is in writing, certified mailed to David. And just confirm that that's our position, and there's no need to keep going over and over again unless there's some other legal action. There's something that should be. Controlled in the process, which seems like we, we should have some more control over being insulted and accused of things that are not appropriate.
We tried different strategies, um, and maybe it's time for that one. Clearly, what we're doing is not, not working, so we need to do something different.
I mean, I, I agree with you, Phil, that, you know, every meeting, he accuses us of things that are just totally outrageous, and I think. We should seek legal counsel for his behavior at these meetings and, you know, put something in writing, and we may have to read it at every meeting. Whatever, you know, Laura Spector Morgan recommends, but we will counter his statement and, you know, cut him off.
Because one of the concerns of the board is that you. David comes forward each meeting, if you, if you don't know the history, and you haven't sat through all the abuses. Uh, you, you could, uh, you feel that some exact positions are accurate, so, uh, that's one of our concerns as well. Okay, let's, let's, let's talk about a different strategy and. Okay, um. I guess we're going on to a there is, we've got a request for a non-public session to discuss librae consumis RSA 91832 CME.
Bill Gerretti, yes.
I feel stressed, yes.
Peter Christie, yes.
Nancy Carter, yes.
Joanna Wickham, yes.
We are in a non-public session.